Ready Russ?
Yes.
We'll call this Monday night, September ninth, meeting of the Jamestown City Council, recession to order, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Sheldon?
Here.
Brackman?
Here.
Penney?
Here.
Reynolds?
President.
Faulkner?
Here.
Muntz, Gwaino?
Here.
Deversa?
Here.
Russell?
Here. Uh, just, at this point, uh, we'll give the opportunity for people to speak to the council. Uh, please leave your name and address, we want you to march to five minutes, and then you'll have to address the council's seat.
Melissa Pater, eighty-three forty-six Faulkner Street, um, I got two things to talk about tonight. The first thing is just a, kind of a proposal of something to do, um, this winter. Last winter, it seemed like a lot of people didn't decorate their houses for Christmas. So I've spoken with, uh, Greater Chautauqua Federal Credit Union, and Southern Chautauqua Federal Credit Union, and they have generously donated three hundred dollars each to, um, a prize that would include one hundred dollars per ward for a decorating Christmas tree comp- uh, competition. So I've spoke with the mayor, uh, briefly, a while back, when this idea first came about, and we just have to kind of talk about and figure out how people would either submit their entry to get in, or we just kind of go by the boundaries of each ward, and whoever decorates, we kind of give, like, people the top three, or, you know what I mean, or something like, I- I- those technicalities, I guess, we can talk about if it's something that the city would like to go forward with being a partner in.
Do you have any more on this?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So it, um, it- it basically just gives each, because like I said, last year, it seemed like there wasn't a lot of decorations, and honestly, Vincent Ogdenbenny is the reason that I came up with this idea, because he loves Christmas lights. So I thought it was kind of boring last year, so I thought this is a perfect way to kind of get people involved in the community and see where we can go from there. The second one is something that was brought up in two thousand twelve. In June of two thousand twelve, Terry Harper was killed on Washington Street, and a group of people fought for crosswalk to be put on this, uh, in the street on Thirteenth Street on Wa- in Washington Street. So Terry, it's been twelve years since Terry died. Since Terry died, the park has added a huge playground, and now splash pads. So my concern is that crosswalk, at that intersection right there at Thirteenth and Washington, is very dangerous. At the hospital, they have those things in the middle of the road that say it is a state law to stop at a crosswalk. So there was a Post-erna article that asked for some legislation to be written about crosswalks in, um, in and near parks. And one of the things that I have noticed about the city of Jamestown, and the way that it's constructed, is that the park areas are not very safe, with crosswalks, with signage, um, so there is a traffic law, Article twenty-seven, Section one-one-five-one, that states, "When traffic control signals are not in place, not in operation, the driver of the vehicle shall yield to the right way, slowing down and stopping to the pedestrian crossing the crosswalk, cross- crossing the crossway in a crosswalk. On the, on the, on the roadway upon which this, the vehicle travels, except when the pedestrian is crossing a roadway, at the point where the, the pedestrian has a tunnel or overpass, has to sh- they have to, um, yield to the, to all vehicles." No pa- no pedestrian shall suddenly leave a curb, other, or other safe place, and walk into the path of a vehicle, which is so close that the, in, uh, impractic- impractical for the driver to yield. And just, um, just the other day, I was down, um, at, at a crosswalk that didn't have any signage besides the, the bright yellow ones that are out there, and two people didn't stop for me. And that happens more than, more than we know. We had a gentleman here saying crosswalk, he was in the wheelchair, if we remember. The, the crosswalks in the city of Jamestown really, really, really need to be safer. And I think that, you know, I- I know that every one of them can't have a blinking flashing light, but the, but the ones that are important, that one in Brooklyn Square, that one on Foot Avenue by the hospital, and the one on Washington Street. So there's three that I think that really, really, really need to be looked into. And at the end of this, this is a Post-erna article from September sixteen, two thousand and twelve, and at the end of it, it says, "Ideally, we would like the, we would like the law to be in honor of Terry Harper and his passing. An Assembly, Andy Godala, stated that he would support this law of legislation." I did reach out to Andy's office, and I did talk to his assistant, and, um, she's going to look into it. I've also given information to George Perlo's office, because I think this is a very important thing to talk about. Um, I know that there were grants that were given to, I think that might have been school zones, but, you know, just the conversation, I know that Mark's not here, but, um, I- I should have brought this up a while ago, um, but there was, I know I'm over my minutes, I'm sorry, but the crosswalks versus crosses was a movement that these people made in two thousand twelve. So I, I really would like to have that something of a concern, or looked into, or discussed. Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to address the council?
Sure. My name is Thomas Park. Uh, I'm still not gonna give you guys my address, live streaming. Uh, if you do want it, you can come ask me after the meeting, and I would, uh, I'd be willing to share that with you. So, um, I left the city council meeting a couple weeks ago, and I went home, and I was sitting there with my wife, and I got a very disturbing phone call from a family member, uh, where a member in this room reached out to him through private social media, and began to ask troublesome questions, such as where I lived, where my location was, when he failed to provide that information. The person wanted to know where I worked, and when, at that point, he, that's when he called me, and, uh, and I just said, "Hey, just tell, tell, tell her that you don't want, you know, you don't want to be involved in this." And so he did, and that person then told him that if he had anything private that he wanted to confide in her, that they would keep it confidential. And I have an absolute problem with that. That's, that's a little bit, uh, a little bit tyrannical there. You know, I, I would certainly hope that if we're reaching out to, uh, the family members of critics, that we would absolutely consult the city attorney before doing that. Because as a taxpayer, you know, when you do things like that, you open the city to some litigation. Uh, I did put a FOIA request in, so I could, uh, receive those, because, you know, we're looking for my private address, which sounds a little bit like, uh, government business there. It was denied, uh, I, I do plan to appeal that, uh, absolutely do plan to appeal that. Uh, and I, I do expect those messages to be given to me. Uh, I would certainly hope that, uh, that tyrannical behavior is, is not done ever again. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Uh, my name is Tom Andalora, I live at eleven West State Street in Jamestown. Change as a noun is a concept. Change as a verb is much more difficult to tackle, and requires imagination, the willingness to self-evaluation, and most importantly, action. I've been writing about the city government for a decade. I've watched dozens of meetings, and gathered quite a bit of factual information along the way. I'm here tonight to share what I think are some positive, vital ideas for this change in this city. Let's start with the Department of Development. On the website, it says, "The mission of the DOD is quote, 'Create vibrant and safe neighborhoods with decent and affordable housing options, and to generate new investments that will improve the overall quality of life, well-being, and sustainability of the entire community,' unquote." In other words, the DOD is in charge of all housing and all economic development in the city. Does this make any sense, that one department would be in charge of this massive task? Although I'm sure the people in the DOD work very hard to achieve these goals, it's delusional to think this system is working. It doesn't. The housing problem in the city is spiraling out of control. For years, the Housing Department met for fifteen minutes twice a month, and no one here said a word about it. Aside from the ARPA funding, there isn't nearly enough new economic, economic development in the city. The tax base is shrinking, and homeowners continue to bear the burden. As far as they, as hard as they are working at DOD, they are failing in both areas. How about if we split it in two? A Department of Economic Development and a Department of Housing. Each department should have an extremely qualified and effective leader running it. Next, there are certain nonprofits and foundations in this community that are not only too powerful, but seem to be in control of the city's future. They do not often think about what is best for the people who live here. For example, the train station was renovated with taxpayer money in the amount of over fifteen million dollars. This building was given to the NCC for free with no public discussion. One of the stipulations of the building receiving taxpayer money was that it was to be a transportation hub for cards. That happened for a while, until the Comedy Center and the Gebby Foundation decided they didn't want cards there anymore. I believe it was because they didn't care for the type of people that used that bus stop. I don't have time for more details now, but to make a long story short, co- cards got kicked out of the Comedy Center, and taxpayers are now on the hook for a million dollars to build another hub. This is outrageous. It is also taking a working business off the tax rolls. So how about the cards goes back to where we paid for it to be, the Comedy Center? That would save taxpayers a million dollars. In my opinion, we were sold a bill of goods about the Comedy Center and the Gebby Foundation, and from the Gebby Foundation, about the impact the comedy would have economically. Over a hundred thousand tourists were promised to be in Jamestown every year. This is obviously not happening. We, this town, you, you all, we've put our apes in one basket. We now deserve an honest accounting of our taxpayer-funded investment. We deserve an honest and conso- comprehensive report on tourism in the city. Next, everyone in this city should get involved in their government. Pay attention, and you will learn a lot. The local develop- the Jamestown Local Development Corporation is a murky organization that gives out millions of taxpayer money. I find much what they are doing there very distasteful. Again, I do not have the time to get into everything that goes on there. Some of the members and elect- some of the members are elected officials, and some of the members are private citizens. Why are private citizens determining who receives millions of dollars in taxpayer money? The board somehow managed to give money to each other, a few years ago, through what I believe was creative lawyering, and they may be continuing to do it. The whole JLDC is slandered to allow one foundation in town to have far too much say about taxpayer money. There should be a one-term limit for all non-elected members of the JLDC. Next, term limits on the council. There are people on this council, in this room, who were there when the train station was given for free to the NCC. None of you that were there ever informed the public what was going on. This city needs new ideas. It needs new people with imagination. We don't need people sitting here for ten or twenty years. I suggest the term limits be set at six years. I've just offered at least four very good ideas for you to all ponder, but I hardly doubt, unless the public is paying attention and gets involved, anything will change, although I hope I am wrong. We need to start using change as a verb in Jamestown. We need imagination. We need to think out of the box. We need to get the same people out of power. The town is very ill. We need change. Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to address the council?
Doug Champ, two-two-five Bowlin Street. I came here tonight because I thought the VPU was gonna be here, that was on the agenda, and, uh, apparently that hasn't happened, or couldn't happen. I do have a question regarding that. Are they coming back at some point in time?
Yes.
So I guess I'll save my commentary on, for that, at that time, um, and we can, uh, we can further discuss what I hoped to have said. Um, could you tell me when they might be coming back?
As soon as we know, I will let, we will announce it, we had something come up today, so. I don't know an exact date at this time.
That's fine, I, that's the reason why I actually showed up, so.
Sorry, it was the last minute.
And I don't have to say anything, other than I, I do appreciate citizens coming here. As you all know, uh, this is your government, and whatever your issues are, uh, in order to take an interest in those issues, not only you have to participate with them from home and in your neighborhood, but also in the community. So I've been doing this for way too long, and, um, I'm glad other people come. Not everyone has the ability to start talking in a, in a direction, sometimes maybe in a direction the city doesn't want to go in, or maybe a direction that they haven't thought about. But the mere fact that you do come is an important process of the citizen-government e- enterprise. And I encourage not only you to continue, but I encourage you to bring others with you.
Good point.
Does anyone else would like to address the council?
Yeah, I spoke at the meeting, I look at me, I spoke at the meeting before this. I live on White Hill and South Avenue. Car- Andy Foley. Cars blow through that stop sign, and I'm sure you all saw the video I posted about a week ago. That car was going fifty-five to sixty miles an hour. Last night, a car, I had my three, we have Yorkies, and I had them outside, and a girl ran that stop sign and almost hit me. She went about two blocks, and I heard bum, boom, okay? I ran back to the house with the dogs, got in the car, and went up there. She had, as soon as she hit the, as soon as I heard the noise, I looked at her car, she took off, and I thought, "I'm gonna catch up with her." So I followed her. She turned around on South Main Street, came back down South Avenue, but then I flashed my lights, and she flew by me, turned on White Hill, she ran the stop sign on Myrtle Park, Prospect, Broadhead, South Main, went over to her house on Howard, and I said, "Did you even see you almost hit me?" She goes, "I didn't see ya." Okay, I said, "Do you know what you hit?" And she goes, "No." I go, "You don't know if it was a man or a woman?" And she goes, "I don't know what it was." I go, "Do you care?" She goes, "Stop harassing me." Now, and I, they've already heard, somebody's gonna get killed. There's little kids that ride bikes up there, he knows, his wife walks up there. People walk that street, all the old people, all the time. They blow through that stop sign, and I'm not talking about, thank God this guy just today sent police up there, there were like nine, I saw him like patrol about nine times. The ironic thing is, after they went up the street, two minutes later, cars were running the stop sign. I'm hoping they parked in my driveway. I want them to back up in my yard and watch these people do it all day, because this is crazy. The little kids up there, especially, it's two blocks from Fletcher School. The little kids, somebody's gonna get killed, and then they're gonna go, "Maybe we should do something." I don't know about cameras, I asked him, you know, how much they cost or whatever. Speed bumps won't slow them down, seriously. The mini bikes that, they'll go through the speed bump, you know, where, not a speed bump, but the cars and trucks don't seem to care. They really don't. And I mean, like I said, I thank him for even showing everybody the video, that guy flying through there. If a little kid was on his bike, there's no way that guy would have stopped. And there's deer there constantly, constantly, during the day, during the night, and when that girl hit it last night, she didn't even know what she hit, and she didn't seem to care. So I called the police department, they went up and saw her. I don't know what happened, and the girl told me, I'll be honest with you, we probably won't do anything. She said, "We didn't see her run the stop signs, you did. We can't go off your camera watching her fly through the, you know, stop sign." And it's like, "Are you kidding me?" It's like, people get evidence on the camera all the time, and you can't use it? Then make me a, a junior cop or something, write tickets, because seriously, I'll, when people run it, I'll follow them, they can outrun me, and I, I will write tickets for the city. Because this is crazy. If they start writing people tickets there, maybe they'll say, "Hey, they've been writing tickets now for the last couple of weeks, we better not, you know, we better slow down. They gotta stop." They don't. And I don't want anybody hit. So, yeah. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Foley, we did get your email and stuff in the mayor's office, and I know you spoke to Ashlyn, so we'll continue to engage in conversation about it.
I called you like four times, they won't let me talk to you. I guess they must think I'm a nut, but I mean, I used to call Eddie.
I may not always be in there.
Well, I, I, Eddie Sunk was his mother, I hired her at FedEx like fifty years ago, okay?
Did you leave your phone number?
It was a mistake, but, um, yeah, I gave him my phone number, do you want it?
Sure.
Don't print that.
I'll let, no, don't say it, I'll let you write it on there.
No, I don't care, they can call me all they want, I don't care. Yeah, thank you. Well, that's okay, like I said, I called you like four times, they go, "She's busy," and I thought, "No, she just doesn't want to talk with me."
That's why they're calling you, she missed, she's probably not lying. Thank you.
I'll add to Mr. Foley's comments, uh, residents on the south side of South Avenue are town bus night residents, and I know a few of them, and they're concerned about the, uh, speeding and the, uh, running the stop signs, even, uh, from the town of Bus Night, uh, so, sorry.
Okay, my name is Kim Mason, I live at nine Forest Park in Jamestown. My concern is of these food trucks, because I have, um, proof of a certain food truck where they have sold alcohol out of that food truck. They don't have a liquor license, it makes it so much easier, like, these food trucks are so easy, they, they only take cash, um, cash can disappear. How are we making money off of these food trucks, really, if you think about it? And then these restaurants that are trying to, to survive, and they're trying to, um, you know, employ beer employees and pay their taxes, and city, county, IRS, okay, so we've got these food trucks that come in, and they just, okay, yay, free for all, and we don't have to do much. Well, wait a second. Okay, so we have one food truck here in Jamestown that has, um, it has a wrap around it that is of a restaurant that's no longer a business, and then the name and the LLC is different, so they're registered through state, so, which is illegal. Um, so what I'm trying to say, it, you know, and I, I've read about food trucks where they, they gunned out of these food trucks. Um, you want to talk about public safety? This, this food truck thing is, like, it's unbelievable. I'm sorry, but I, I don't, I don't go for it, I, if you want to have it in a fair, if you want to have it in a park, you know, that's different. But if you're gonna have it within the city, and you have a big, huge food truck, I mean, this thing is humongous. Come on, come on, folks. How, what are we accomplishing? What, where are you gonna be getting, where are we gonna be getting the money from these food trucks? They can take that money. I was told, and there is a, um, a phone call conversation, this gentleman said he makes seven thousand dollars every time he takes that food truck out. Seven thousand dollars. That's a lot of money for one time. All right? Now, do you think he's paying his taxes? Do you think he's, um, taking care of his business? Oh, absolutely. He's only taking care of himself. It's self-serving, it's not right, and, um, I think you really, this board really needs to take a real big look into this, because it's serious. It can be a really bad public, uh, safety issue, especially if they're selling alcohol out of those trucks, and if they sell it to minors, mind you, and whatever else if they're selling it. Okay? This is serious stuff, and I take it very seriously. And thank you for your, you know.
Anyone else?
Uh, I am Keith Lee, I am Keith Lindeman, I live at, at the Covenant Manor. I wanna, I wanna address this, this committee about, about the fact that my good friend has, right there, has been nothing but slandered, and ridiculed, and lied about, a- and, and we live in a, now, with the, with, with modern technology, nobody can BS nobody. We can look it up. If you're diligent enough, you can look it up, in, and, on the internet. That way, nobody can, can slander nobody, nobody can deform somebody else's character. So, I'm gonna tell you, you have someone on your committee, this gentleman, if I can call you a gentleman, right here, Andrew Faulkner. He, he broke, and we have videotape footage from the, a police.
Sir, we're not, we're not, we, we discussed this in the other meeting. This is a, a civil issue, if it's in court, it's fine, it was nothing to do with us. We, we, we're not the judge, the jury, we don't make a decision on that. As I mentioned in the other room, I said, if you have a beef with a particular person on the board, and there's a crime that's been committed, it goes through the police department, it's investigated, if a charge is made, and a conviction is made, then it would come to our board, there's an ethics, uh, clause in our charter that we would look at. But until that happens, we're not gonna sit here and discuss something that we have no privy to. It's just, it's not, it, it's not gonna happen here, okay? So I would suggest that if it goes through the court system, the legal system first, if it comes back to us after there's been an arrest, a conviction, uh, a sentencing, whatever, then it becomes an issue that we would deal with if it's one of our own. But other than that, we, we can't get into, I'm not gonna get into.
Person, open investigation.
Open investigation, civil litigation, stuff like that, it's not something that, that we can have. That, because you're also opening yourself up to slander if that doesn't go your way, because you're now pointing at someone that's, you know.
If, if it wasn't true, I wouldn't say that especially.
And I'm not saying it is or it isn't, I'm just saying that I think it's best that we let it go through the legal system, if in, in fact, and then, when some, if and when something happens, then it will be something we can look at and deal with. Thank you.
And then we just send it to you, correct?
It would definitely go through.
Thank her.
Through the system. Thank you. As was mentioned, that brought up, there will be, the VPU will not be here, they were supposed to come and provide a presentation, but it's been delayed, probably, I would guess, in the next few weeks.
I'm hoping the next recession, because we have a bye.
So the.
So, fingers crossed.
What's today?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Tentatively, we plan on the twenty-third, if it's okay with them to be available. So with that, we'll move on to our committee reports, uh, we'll go to housing first, if you want to go with that. Billy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we had a few speakers. Lissy Pater, me spoke on some of the housing, uh, concerns, and noted that she personally saw the house on Linnery, uh, is down in demolition, and made good time. She made a comment that one at a time even makes good progress. She brought to Crystal's attention, which I think Crystal in her department already knew, a home on Strong Street with tires in the backyard, and, uh, we were told that, uh, that house is being cited and is on the list. There's two houses on Buffalo Street that are scheduled to come down at any time, uh, from here on in. Another, uh, constituent spoke, Doug Champ, and he brought to our attention, doing some research across, uh, different parts of the country, that, uh, there's three levels of housing platforms that he's doing some research out, and one is in-built, new housing, one is remodeled and converted, and the other class is accessory dwelling units. And we, uh, reminded him that the, uh, Scottman's Plan and zoning, uh, group that we've contracted with is holding a meeting tomorrow, six to eight, for a public forum at Wicked Warrants. And these three, uh, things he's gonna bring up, he, uh, for people to research on their own. He also suggested, and I think it's the second time that we've heard, that there might be a, a, a need for a housing conference here in the city, uh, to invite stakeholders to give, uh, their ideas and suggestions on how to improve housing, uh, if some of these alleged jobs do appear from Cummins and Letroye. Uh, so we're, we're, we understand there's a housing crisis, and we're gonna move forward in trying to get others' opinions in there. And then Crystal spoke, and advised us that, uh, high- And then Crystal spoke and advised us that hired a new code enforcement officer starting today. A new, looking to bring on a new development coordinator. And that, I don't know if it's an RFP or a request for
Job posting.
Job posting.
For a posting, job posting, to fill that spot. And again, reminded us about the forum at six to eight tomorrow at the Wicked Warrens. She also brought to our attention, which is great news for most of us who are wanting to see progress on the website, using GovPilot as a program. It's a web-based program that the Department of Development has merged all of its other programs into. There'll be training, maybe a training video for council people and interested parties on how that new dropdown on the development page works. She also mentioned that there's a button that you can put it on your phone called GovAlert. And if the email's on record, it will automatically give you updates and status reports on different projects. And lastly, the roof and sewer and water line grant has been closed with more apps than there is money. But they'll be, in the next day or two, folks will lean through all those applications to see which ones are complete and which ones are, will fit the mold for that kind of grant. And then lastly, Brett talked about Hoco, wanting Governor Hoco in an article in Buffalo News talking about the opportunity for short-term Airbnbs and Verbos to collect money from them if we still have them in our zoning. So it updates the zoning for those type of homes needs to be done. And if we can't wait for the comprehensive plan to be finished, then we can initiate some legislation to to enact sooner, to possibly raise some revenue. Kim Mason mentioned that she's had the opportunity to have several homes, rental homes, and there's been backlash from folks taking advantage of not paying the rent and not moving out and actually becoming squatters in some cases. So as we all know, housing is a priority for us. And I'm hopeful that the symposium tomorrow night will bring some new ideas and new concepts to solve some of our problems. Thank you.
I just had a quick question about the roof program. When they comb through the applications, is it going to be like the way it was before? Where we're sending people out into the field and make visual inspection to see who has, you know, the most need?
I will say, what was the number of applications? Was it? I know before the end of the week, it was at sixty-eight, so we're probably between.
Seven and a hundred. I think we're at almost a hundred.
How many have done, have processed and done already?
None. Zero.
Wasn't there a program before this one?
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, so we were in the, there were a hundred and thirty that were approved. And we're nearing the end of that first and second round of the, so.
Thank you.
Exactly. During that first round, some of the estimates on the cost of the roof were, came in lower. And that was why we had the extra money to go forward this round is because they weren't as expensive as we thought they would be.
Yeah, we allowed for up to $25,000 per roof. And they were coming in more in the $18,000 or so range. It just, it also depends on the size of the roof.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a number of resolutions. Rand Precision and Chiny Corp Company has gifted the City of Jamestown Police Department $5,200. A major donation from this company. We're very grateful for that. It was approved. This company, they're about to spend that money purchasing semi-mission conversion kits from Amchar Wholesale Rochester, New York. Total purchase price is $1,845. Since that was approved, and they would also like to use that money to purchase equipment cases from Pelican Products Incorporated in Lawrence, California. Total purchase price is $3,341.10. That is approved as well. And then a big promo, they'd also like to purchase drone equipment from Steel City Drones, 600 North Bell Avenue in Caribou, Pennsylvania. Total purchase price is $36,098.99. The equipment will be purchased with funds provided in the 2024 DCJS RETEC grant, which here from the sharing accepted. That was approved. Our lieutenants Joshua Benson, Kyle Scholl, Evan Vandeveld. Our authorized lieutenant, the New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control, first-line supervisor training program. Be held or conducted by the fire department of the City of New York at the City of New York's Fire Academy in Queens, New York, beginning September 16th, concluding October 11th. All fees and expenses paid by the State of New York Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, Office of Fire Prevention and Control. That was approved. And also authorized Chief Forrester, K9 Officer Aircraft and Nuisance Officer Zach Sandberg. Authorized lieutenant, the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services, Public Safety Symposium to hold in Albany, New York, Department of Public Safety through September 20th. With expenses paid by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services. That was approved. Also, a couple donations, Dickie family, the president of the Donaian Bench that will be located in the City of Jamestown, Jackson Taylor Park, donated $1,386. $386. The bench is in recognition of Earlene Dickie, who was a schoolteacher, who checked in literacy. And Hammer and Chainsaw, in recognition of George Dickie, a carpenter who enhanced many homes in the city. The city rightfully accepts that donation. That was approved. And lastly, Jamestown Bigger Football. Mrs. Jarnes is donating a plaque at Allen Park. And I'm Tom Fisher, who was longtime South Side football coach and proponent of local youth sports. Will have to be located and installed on the fence at Allen Park. And that was accepted as well. Couple updates from the top trawler. Yet the percent of budget spent to date is sixty-three percent. Or we should be at sixty-five percent or sure at this point, which is a good thing. The other expenses coming up. And springbook is moving towards commending the payroll. And next will be the taxes. And it's coming up in the near future. And we also briefly discussed the budget schedule for the upcoming budget for 2025. And that will be finalized and presented to the council property at the next workshop. And that's all we have?
Just a couple. And looking at the schedule too. So for the people who are new, the mayor gives her report on the budget by Tuesday, October 8th. And we have some challenges this year with timing because of the way the dates work. So if you look at, the following Monday is Columbus Day holiday, so there's no meetings. So we would have to look at the department reviews on the 21st of October, the 28th of October, which is a voting session. We'd have to come in before that to do that. November 4th, November 11th is also holiday. That's Veterans Day. So a little meeting. And then November 18th would be the other one. So it'll be the 21st, 28th, November 4th, November 18th. And then the 25th is actually the voting session in November that we'd have to approve the budget because that's the week of Thanksgiving. And the budget has to be approved before the 1st. And we wouldn't have much time if we begin with the Thanksgiving week plus, the next week would be too late. So we're, I check with the departments on which order the dates are comfortable with. You know, the police, the safety, DPW and parks usually go together. The first floor was a controller, clerk office, services office. And then you have DPW, or you have DOD and usually those with
The agencies.
The agencies, right. So you can break those into four. So just, we have a tight schedule in early, early budget season. There's two holidays packed in there. So it's going to be a little tricky. That's kind of the tentative schedule. And then we'll basically work that out and exactly which date you want which department in and what time and where. So that is that for finance. And on public safety, do you want?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two people speak. One was Doug Champ. He spoke about something that he brought up a couple of years ago, which frankly, I'm in agreement with. Is the school zone area on Buffalo Street, how it goes from Washington and then down to the elementary school on Buffalo Street. And there's the school zone in Wash. And then the school zone stops and then it picks back up again. So there's a small area, you know, seventy-five to a hundred yards where it's not a school zone, and it goes back into a school zone. I think what Mr. Champ, and he brought this up a couple of years ago, is the fact is, why don't we have it one large? What's that?
I don't think you can because school zones can only be a certain distance from the school. So you can check into it, but that was the answer we were given, that there's state law. Because we had looked at making it all one through, but at a certain distance, the school zone has to end.
Okay.
And unfortunately, you can check on that, but that's what we were told at the time.
Okay. All right. So we spoke about that. And then Mr. Foley also spoke, which he did here now, about the issue of the stop sign near his house on Waydale. Chief Jackson said he's going to continue to have officers patrol that, try to continue to write more tickets there. And we're going to follow up with Mr. Foley and see if that helps at all going forward. We had a number of resolutions too. They were also all on the finance agenda, so I'll just gloss over them quick. The first one was the donation by Kurt Rem and the employees at Rand Precision for the fifty, $5,200 to purchase new equipment for the SWAT team. That passed. The second one also was a donation by Rand Corporation for $1,845 and no cents for the semi-mission conversion kit. And that passed. The third one was also for the police department for a donation from Rand Foundation for $3,341.10 for the Pelican cases for equipment. That passed. Number four was for the police department, is authorized to purchase the drone equipment that was showed up on finance for a total cost of $36,098.99 through DCJS, the LTAC grant. That passed. And the next resolution was for the fire lieutenants Joshua Benson, Kyle Arshol, Evan K. Vandeveld, be authorized to attend the New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control, first-line supervisors training program on the dates of September 16th to October 11th. That was also on the finance agenda. That passed. The next one resolved that Chief Forrester, K9 Officer Aircraft, Nuisance Officer Zach Sandberg authorized to attend the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services, the Public Safety Symposium, September 16th, December, September 20th, 2024. And the expenses paid by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services. That was on finance agenda. That passed as well. And then the last thing we had under informational reporting, the block party on Lakeview Avenue from Front Street to Ellis Avenue. Obvious road closure in there for Saturdays, September 14th, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And that passed. And that's all we have?
Yes. Any questions? You want to public works, Randy?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. We had two resolutions. One from the Dickie family for the donating of the bench. That will be down at the Jackson Taylor Park. And the other one is the plaque that, that Tom Fisher is going to, we're going to be honoring Tom Fisher. I sat on the Jamestown Bigger Football Board as a commissioner and I worked with Tom. And he gave, he was a real legend and he gave a lot of, a lot of his time toward the youth in Jamestown. And he passed last year. Way too early, but he'll be sadly missed. But we are going to put a plaque up on the south side Bigger Football fence over there. So I think that's a very nice gesture. It's something that's been in the works for a little while. And those resolutions passed. One other thing we did touch on is that the DOT did have an information meeting at the library this week, or last week. And I attended, Mayor Eklund did, and Crystal did, and Mark Ritson did. And, and it's going to go off, of course, not as soon as people would like. I mean, it's going to basically start May of next year. And it will be done in its completion in the following year, at the end of the summer. But the bulk of the work is going to get done. And hopefully, there won't be a lot of growing pains with, with their efforts to upgrade East Second Street. So. And other than that, that's all we have.
Anything else before we go to the mayor?
So just want to give everybody an update of some changes for those of you that were here, you know, the last few years in discussion with President Dolce and all the department heads. I am not going to participate in your budget deliberations, going back to what was done years ago. This is your budget when we hand it to you. It's yours to discuss. I will be in the building. I will be here. But it's going to be you and the department heads. And because of that tight schedule, I did mention to Erica that if you guys want to add an additional meeting, you just have to follow the rules with Jenny, give the announcement if you feel you have to squeeze one in with the shortness of Mondays. We did meet today, Erica, Joe and I, for four hours, probably.
Long time.
It was a long time to get through the first numbers. There'll be many before that. But, you know, things are definitely rising. So we have some challenges ahead of us. But we'll try and give it to you as clear and as concise as we can with you guys through your recommendations. What I will tell you is that Erica has made a lot of changes to just accounting information for flow of the budget. And you're going to have a lot of backup with it. So hopefully, in those weeks that you don't have deliberations, you can look through the paperwork and have the backup. And as you know, she and I are always available for any questions. That is it for open session. And then I have, for executive session, we have one item for potential litigation with no action to be taken.
May I add two things for this comment?
Sure.
I'd like Mark to not hear, but I was going to congratulate him and his team for the Baker Street rendition or de-laneing, I guess they call it, at Purcell School. It, for, for me, it works wonders. And it's not been any trouble that I know of. Tim, have you had any accidents or anything crazy there?
We did, we did get a call about it today in the mayor's office, some concern about the crosswalk.
Where it is?
Yeah, that, that was it though.
I, it was a vast improvement even going out to Howard Avenue. So I was going to give kudos to Mark and his crew and the county plan, whoever all was involved in that. Secondly, a couple of my constituents brought it to my
And secondly, a couple of my constituents brought it to my attention, and I never really gave it any thought, I guess I should. All the gas stations around Jamestown are six nine, three ninety.
Three sixty-nine.
Three sixty-nine. Sherman's like thirty cents less, climbers twenty-five cents less, Ripley, I mean, I'm not sure. Where can we take this complaint? I mean, do we, do we go down to United Refinery and say, what's, you know, what's the markup? We're so close to the refinery, but, uh, it's, it's not, and it's more than just those three or four other communities, it's-
Buffalo's is cheap, Tim.
Cheaper.
I just got gas at Buffalo, it was three twenty-nine.
Somebody said Long Island was two ninety.
I had the same person call me because they mentioned Cotton Gila, and they, their complaint was, it's just in the city-
You're right.
It's always three sixty-nine, but you get outside the city all the way around, and, and, and that it's, uh, it's always lower, but it's always higher in the city. He, he used the term, this isn't my term, he used the term price gouging, and he's upset. Um, and he mentioned some of, um, some of our, uh, residents that are lower income and, and, you know, struggling, that they're constantly paying higher prices, uh, around and in the City of Jamestown for gasoline.
You'd ask if we could address it somehow, as a group or individually, or-
Elliot isn't here tonight, but-
I know Elliot's not here either, but, 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 uh, maybe I'll put him on notice for that and see if we can-
We can talk to him tomorrow.
Oh, thank you, Tim. Yeah, sorry to put it out, it just came to mind as we were in.
We can talk to him tomorrow, he'll be in tomorrow.
Thank you, a motion. Motion for executive session, I think, session for potential litigation.